Very good, very good, Mike.
Okay, are we situated?
I believe so, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for August 3, 2010. It is special because we are not meeting at our usual time, as set forth in the charter, of 6:00 PM. We are meeting, uh, meeting notice at 2:30. It's currently 3:30, and we're starting early today, this afternoon, because we'd like to conclude our business, uh, the public's business, and move on to the Glendale National Night Out events that we may hear something later about, uh, throughout the meeting. So, without further ado, roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Mr. Quintero, will you lead us in the flag suit?
Yes, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. This afternoon, we pray for the families of our community and our nation. We are thankful for the stability families provide and the sense of community and responsibility towards our fellow humans they instill. We ask for guidance for all of the leaders in this community. May they work together for the future of Glendale towards continued harmony in our lives, neighborhoods, and homes. May the council deliberate with wisdom and guide us towards stability and prosperity as they make difficult decisions required of them. Amen.
Can we have your report?
Agenda for the August 3, 2010, special meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed Thursday, July 29, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item.
A 3 is presentation and appointments. A 3A is agenda preview for the meetings of August 10, 2010.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, for August 10, there are no business agenda items for the Glendale Housing Authority. For the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, we have one business item, public hearing, Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding proposed development project for Bevmo, which is Beverages &amp; More, to be located at 200 South Grand Boulevard. That evening at 6:00 PM, um, we have a number of consent items, Director of Public Works, expansion of the Los Angeles County Recycling Market Development Zone, General Manager of Glendale Water &amp; Power, bidding results for the verification, testing, and repair of GWP Fiber Optics communication cables. Under adoption of ordinances, we have ordinance amending a number of ordinances and approving and adopting the Ninth Amendment to the amended redevelopment plan for the central grand, uh, central Glendale redevelopment project area. Under action items, City Attorney, amendments to the Glendale Municipal Code pertaining to remedies for municipal code violations. And we have one hearing, City Attorney, extension of a moratorium prohibiting the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and staff comments.
Staff comments.
Well, just maybe to expand, do we have someone here presenting on National Night Out? Any point? Well?
I don't think we do.
They're probably out getting ready. Um, that's up to the mayor.
Margaret can talk specifically. You're talking about your location and specifically. Let's let Councilmember Friedman talk about it in general.
Well, just to let the public know that the reason that we are meeting at this extra special time, and by the way, that's only if you happen to be watching us live on Tuesday and not in one of the repeats later in the week, is that today is, tonight is National Night Out, which Margaret Hammond will talk a little bit more about later, but it's a really wonderful, um, event where communities all over the country participate in a night where they get out on the streets and they go to block parties and they go to community events and they go to parks, and they get to know their neighbors, they get to know their community, they show the bad guys that there are eyes on the street at all time, and that they will commit to being those eyes on the street. And basically, it's just a really good time. So, tonight, starting at 6 o'clock, there are locations all over Glendale. Whatever neighborhood you're in, I guarantee you that you are close to a National Night Out event. And I don't know if there is a listing of them somewhere on the web. Someone's nodding in the back.
GlendaleNNO.com.
Mr. City Clerk?
WWW.GLendaleNNO, which stands for NationalNightOut.com.
Okay, so Glendale.NNNO.com will give you a full listing, and all of us council members, as far as I know, will be out and about, running around and sampling the barbecue that's being offered at a lot of these events, and all in all, having a good time. So, I hope to see a lot of the community out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, let's move on.
Next item is consent items. Following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Mr. Weaver.
Move the consent calendar five.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Next item?
Next item would be oral communications.
Okay, uh, this is usually the three-minute section of oral communications. Uh, Margaret, would you like to speak for three minutes on your location? No? Okay. In your regular course. Okay, I don't have any announcement, uh, cards for the three-minute portion. So, let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor and council, at 8, under action items, 8A is General Manager of Glendale Water &amp; Power Regarding Water System Capital Improvement Program, CIP, for fiscal year 2010-2011. At 8A, 1 is a motion approving the expenditures of an amount not to exceed $366,000 and authorizing City Manager to authorize agreements with any of the four pre-qualified engineering consultants to provide professional services for various GWP water system CIP projects in fiscal year 2010-2011.
Okay, Mr. Steiger.
Mayor Najarian, members of the Glendale City Council, two years ago, uh, with your approval, uh, the GWP Water Division pre-approved, uh, four service providers in order to, uh, provide, uh, more efficient service, uh, to our capital design projects. Uh, we are coming forth in the final year of this, uh, prequalification, uh, for permission to, uh, award, uh, five projects to, uh, these pre-qualified, uh, service providers.
Are there any questions?
No. On a motion?
Mr. Weaver.
Move 8A1.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's no other discussion or questions. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
At 8B is City Attorney regarding findings regarding granting appeal by GNS Transit Management DBA City Cab. At 8B1 is a motion granting taxi cab owner's permit for a five-year period and making findings.
Mr. Howard.
It's Mr. Mayor and members of council. On July 20th, the City Council considered and granted an appeal by GNS Transit Management DBA City Cab. The appeal was primarily focused on the, uh, contention by the appellant, GNS Transit, that their permit be granted for a period of, or their taxi operator or owner's permit be granted for five years, um, where the TPC had granted for a period of, in excess of three years but less than four. Um, the, what's before you today is a motion, including the findings, which supports the council's decision to grant the GNS Transit Management DBA City Cab's owner's permit for a period of five years. Happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
And we're going to have a larger discussion of, of this, uh...
...whole subject matter.
Taxi permit at some later point.
In many months down the road, yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move 8B1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
I'm sorry, stop. Uh, I do have some cards. Uh, Herbert Milano and Margaret Hammond. Sorry about that.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. Uh, during the Transportation and Parking Commission meeting several months ago, when this issue came up with regard to extending a five-year, uh, license to, uh, to the taxi cab company and GNS Transit, I mentioned the following issues of contention. And there are several issues that I mentioned during the meeting, and those issues were not included in the minutes that were provided to you for your later deliberation. My concerns during the time, uh, were the following, that there were conflicts of interest, that one of the lawyers representing GNS Transit sits as a civil service commissioner who, um, who later on may sit in judgment of the city staff who prepares the reports. I subsequently, to the meeting, decided to make a California Public Records Act request to see if there was any independent verification of the self-evaluation that was submitted at the time. This city council last week used that self-evaluation as a, as a basis for making your decision, and I know Mr. Weaver did that very clearly. And I want to tell you this, that that self-evaluation has no separate documentation of, of verification from any city staff member. I requested through the California Public Records Act, I had a meeting with Ms. Varpetian, there are no records. So, my conclusion is that that was a self-serving self-evaluation upon which you made a decision makes the decision inappropriate. I want to say the following, that the following organizations, uh, City Cab and, um, this Paratransit organization and the, uh, and this shuttle company are owned by the same entity, and I have some website information here. But here's something that I am of very significant concern. And again, I go back to these, um, campaign contributions to Mr. Najarian from Schaefer Business Group, who was the prior owner of GNS Transit, for $1,500. And then contributions made by the taxi cab, uh, drivers to Mr. Najarian in amounts of, uh, let's see, Mr. Gadimian, $100, Gavorke, $100, Thoros, $100, Hazarmil, $100, Haratourin, $100, Mercari, $100, Gadimian, $100, Sarkisim, $200. And I can just go on and on. It seems to me as if the taxi cab company is either pressuring or inducing or paying for the contributions by having the employees contribute to the campaign, and therefore, uh, we have some inappropriate, um, shall we say, influence being generated here. And I believe we might even have some violations of California law with regard to the entity that controls the contributions, shall we put it that itself. So, a lot of conflicts of interest that I think you should consider. Thank you.
Margaret Hammond.
Good afternoon, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, staff and audience. Um, my name is Margaret Hammond, longtime member of the city of Glendale. Uh, I object to the five-year, um, the granting of the five-year period. It was originally, they were going to do it for what, two years, three years, and somehow it got changed. And if this is based, uh, the granting is based on self-evaluation, I can't believe it. I mean, we can all think we're great. I could say I miss America, but that doesn't mean I am. Uh, but anyway, I am here once again to ask, who oversees the checking of the driver's legal IDs and required driver's license? I've never gotten an answer to that. The other thing is that while Artie is an efficient, uh, city clerk, uh, the remark I heard, uh, two weeks ago was that he was responsible for checking the vehicles. Now, um, I don't think he's a mechanic, and I know I would feel much safer, uh, riding in a cab if I knew that, uh, there were licensed mechanics, uh, looking and checking out the possible defects or problems or whatever of cabs. I'd like to know who, who checks those out? Who, who is the person? Are they, um, licensed? Are they, do they have papers to check out the motor vehicles? I mean, I know Artie's a nice guy, but I don't, I think I'd want him checking my car out. I mean, I'd rather have a mechanic that I know who knows what he's doing. So, uh, that's my feeling on it, and I do object under those, with those facts. Thank you very much.
I can check the oil.
Mr. Kasakian, um, did you pass that mechanic's course yet that we are...
No, I unfortunately didn't. Um, I am not the mechanic, uh, I'm not a mechanic, nor do I play one on TV, and I don't perform those checks myself, but we have two, um, individuals on staff, Maria Maldonado and Stephen Rodriguez, who do. Uh, the inspections are actually done here publicly in Isabel Lot, so anyone can come by and see the point-by-point inspection and points that they have to go through. I'll be happy to let Ms. Hammond know, and she can come by and, um, observe it herself. I think, um, it's, it's actually very interesting how thorough our, our staff is, um, with the amount of detail that they go into with the inspections. Uh, and as far as the background checks, uh, we will be announcing soon that, um, we already do a Department of Justice background check on everyone. Everyone submits to a live scan, a fingerprint check, but per the direction of this council, which will go into effect on August 16th, and will be issuing a press release on it, we have expanded the background check. So, not only do we do a background check on state of California infractions, but any infraction someone may have had throughout the entire nation. So, um, that's an added security measure that was done thanks to a unanimous vote of this council. And my time is up.
Thank you. I have one other speaker, Mr. Sheldon Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had turned in a card earlier. Uh, I'm Sheldon Baker, and I am the attorney for GNS. I am not serving on any commissions, appointments, or anything whatsoever, uh, by this city council, so I think I'm relatively innocent. Uh, I just simply wanted to, uh, say that we find the findings to be very much supported by the public hearing that you had on July 20. Uh, and as far as self-evaluations and et cetera are concerned, I'd point out, uh, that, uh, over a five-year span, there was not one single written complaint. Not one. I wish I could have a similar record, and I wish all my clients could have a similar record such as that. That's pretty outstanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion?
There was a motion. There was a second. Are there any other comments, uh, in light of the public input? Let's take roll, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Okay, next item, please.
Mr. Mayor and council, we now return to oral communication where discussion is limited in time, is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City Manager, Mayor, further matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Margaret Hammond.
Should've just stayed up here. Takes me long enough. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I'm here once again, Mayor Najarian, and, uh, council members and staff. Um, my feeling is, uh, that we need to have concerned citizens speaking to issues. Um, we need to have them here. I mean, they can call me or they can talk amongst themselves. They need to come here and speak to the council. Look what happened in the city of Bell when they did not have people that, and they, they were, can you imagine? 400 votes out of 40,000, and they had them, uh, voted a charter city, and that was how they were able to get those tremendous, uh, apparently pensions and so forth, salaries and pensions. Uh, but it seems in recent years that Glendale citizens have been discouraged from attending meetings. Many of them that I try to get to come, they say, uh-uh, I'm not going to get up there and get hammered. I don't want to be embarrassed or criticized just because I have an opinion and I offer it. And then I said, well, you got to get up there and take your chances, you know? It's easy to sit up in the stands and watch the guys, uh, during the bowl, in the bowl ring, uh, getting gored. But, um, anyway, I do think that rather than encouraging participation, um, with oral communication, that the council, with, uh, a very caustic and derisive attitude, have driven away a lot of speakers who are too timid to come forward. Now, my other thing that I like to talk about is the Riverwalk Park. Um, this park, I thought, was supposed to be, uh, well on its way, but I don't know that I've heard that it is. And I understand that there's still a problem with DreamWorks, which that was something that slipped through the cracks, that we should have held them up till we got that, uh, okay. Now, this will be a wonderful addition to our park system. We have a great parks in Glendale. And, uh, and for the real enjoyment of citizens of Glendale, particularly families that are more, uh, low-income with the gas prices and so forth, they stay in the city. And the hiking and the walking and the picnicking would be wonderful for families. And also, as well as the biking and, uh, the horseback riding. Um, and the thing is, when it's finished, it will complete the access all the way to the ocean. Uh, and we are one of the last links. Um, I just wonder if we could get some funds from the feds or the state, whoever thinks that it's worthwhile to clean up the waterway. Um, I think it would be terrific. And I know when I'm down in the south in Orange County and, and see the people going along the river walks and, you know, running and biking, it's really terrific. A lot of people use those, uh, paths and so forth, and I think it's wonderful enjoyment. It's free, and people can take advantage of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Mohill.
Oh, I forgot on this card. Sorry.
Would you like, you can come up after Mr. Moh, or you can come now if you'd like, Margaret.
Um, tonight, we're going to have that event, uh, at Pacific Park, uh, National Night Out, and we're looking forward to several hundred people. Uh, we're geared up, and, uh, I'm supposed to be there within a half hour, I guess. Um, and we hope anybody who would like to come and volunteer or take advantage of it, uh, or donate, we still, you know, we can always use donations. There's always a lot of people, a lot, tons of kids and so forth. So, thank you very much for allowing me to...
Is that 6 o'clock, Margaret?
Uh, no, it's, well, is it 6? Oh, I have to be there, yeah. Oh, okay. Right, right. Going to be really terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian. City of Bell, City of Glendale, former Chief of Police Randy Adams. Last week, City Manager Jim Starbird said Glendale would not be stuck with paying Chief Adams additional monies. This week, in the Los Angeles Times, is reported that Glendale and a couple of other cities will be paying thousands of dollars each year to pay their pension obligations. Some save $40,000 or $60,000 for Mr. Randy Adams. As a senior city manager with years of experience, why does Mr. Starbird act surprised with the outcome at the city of Bell? Has he not read the Calpurs Plan for the city of Glendale? It appears he does not know his subject matter, then goes ahead and recommends this city to pay more money for city workers. In 2008, he said the budget was balanced, and it was not. Shortly after the passage of the budget, Starbird recommended the city go ahead and give the city workers an additional $8 million-plus benefits. By the end of 2008, Mr. Starbird tells the public and council members, we need to cut city services by $10 million. Where are Mr. Starbird and the city council when it comes to accountability? Mr. Starbird, with the help of Glenn Steiger, Glendale Water Department Manager, we indebted ourselves for millions of dollars of money, which we already do not have, to, to put in smart meters. During this recession, recession, smart meters. At the same time, Mr., uh, the manager of the GWP says we need millions of dollars for repairing pipes, valves, roads, et cetera, but we must have smart meters so we can bomb the city for more years ahead. Council members, where is the accountability for our city manager and council, who recommends we have additional fees, taxes, and more fees and taxes to cover added employees' wages and pensions? Where is the outrage? Are we the city of Bell in the making? Where managers and council members take no responsibility for errors made? GTV6 funding. Last week, I addressed this body and spoke against taxpayers funding of GTV6 programs. Councilman Weaver said the subscribers of GTV6 would be funding these programs, and Councilman Draymond mocked me and wanted to question which of the three programs presented by staff I liked. I said none, like, read my lips, no new taxes. Your colleagues, Councilman Quintero, agreed with me when he said council members have plenty of opportunity year-round at different events or on the dais to be on GTV6. Since I do not have the last word on this discussion, I would like to take this afternoon to clarify for the listening audience how GTV6 is operated and funded. DT, uh, PEG money, Public Education and Government, which is not city of Glend, City of Glendale taxpayer money perceived, but is money the subscribers of Charter Communications are taxed, is supposed to pay for capital improvements, but I have heard it also being used for programming, and a lawsuit is presently in the courts questioning its usage. Mr. Weaver and Mr. Draymond failed to tell the public this little detail last week. Utilities users tax is also added to the charter bill, which is forwarded into the general fund, and a portion of the sales tax the city receives also goes into the general fund accounts. Charter Communications collects from their subscribers about $200,000 to $400,000 annually and sends that money to the city. Since the recession, revenue from charter is down, and therefore the city of Glendale has paid additional monies to GTV6 through the general fund, which, by the way, Councilman Weaver, is also, also taxpayers' money and not funded by other cities. Just for clarification, if one is not a subscriber to Charter Communications or AT&amp;T service, they cannot view Channel 6. But non-subscribers, for free, can view the GTV6 telecast by going to the city homepage and clicking on Agendas and Meetings. So, yes, GTV6 is financed through one subscription to Charter Communications or AT&amp;T and other sources. The question I would like to ask is how much does the city have actually paid GTV6? In addition, I'm told Councilman Draymond is the member of AFTRA Union, and will Mr. Draymond be waiving his acting fees when he appears on Channel 6? Thank you.
Oh, that's a tough question. Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
And thank you again.
Thank you. Herbert Milano.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I want to, uh, got a couple of topics to bring up. The first one is a topic concerning the city budget. Um, I found my experience in listening and being present during the city budget session, and my impression is that, is that it my impression is that it was not as comprehensive and detailed as it should have been, and that many essential topics were not really brought up in a very transparent way. I've been looking at the city budget for now a fairly long time, a good six years at least, and I find that other cities are providing information that maybe the city of Glendale should copy so as to give residents a really easy way to understand how the cities distribute its funds. Many cities use what is called a popular financial report, and the city of Glendale is finally moving in that direction, and I think that's good. But I think that we could all use something simple and easy to understand. Let me, here's my suggestion. A financial report by department, meaning what are the total salaries, total pension, benefits, capital improvement, and maintenance and operation by department. We had something similar to that up until about three years ago, but I would rather see something that separates total salaries for that particular department so that all of the funds and all the distributions basically lie there. Now, we have something close to that right now on the city's budget, but it's insufficient. The problem is that it has about forty-three million dollars of human resources separate and away from the actual department, and I think that if we were to take that money and do a proper distribution of it, in a proper accounting way, we'll be able to basically really see what those expenditures are by department. Second, I'd like to see those capital improvement total dollars by department as well, so that we get a sense as to, you know, how the city is investing its money on a year-to-year basis. The other suggestion that I have is that we are giving, that we be given trends, at least a ten-year trend. Now, other cities do it. Pasadena's on some of their reports, and Burbank does it as well. It would be nice to see a graphical representation of the trends of the various different types of expenditures, the burden that the taxpayers have with regard to the different rates. So if, for example, we had a trend diagram or graphic of the water rates, as they have been for the past few years, I think people would understand how much they have increased. And you yourselves, we have ready at hand whenever something comes before you. So anyways, my suggestion that the city move towards a periodic review of departments and to bring us a really easy-to-understand report to the general public. My second issue has to do with a reply to Mr. Quintero and the comments he made last week. In 1987, I made an investment for an apartment building in Glendale after looking at several dozen apartment buildings that had been built in the city at the time. I think there must have been close to a hundred. I looked at about three dozen of them and finally decided to purchase one that I thought was in good condition and had just received its occupancy permit. So that is basically the history, and I just wanted to clarify to Mr. Quintero, I did not come to Glendale to destroy homes and raise and move residents away and build. The building was already there when I came in to purchase it. And subsequent to that, in about a couple of years, I moved to Glendale myself. I found it a clean city, and it appeared to be well governed at the time. It is important, though, that we, as taxpayers, have a venue for us to express our involvement in city politics. I think that as a taxpayer, I have a prerogative to come before you and tell you what my concerns are. I have a concern that I expressed before, that I think that as a landlord, my rate of water is higher significantly than regular residents are. And I think that we are taking an excessively higher burden than just about everyone else in the surrounding vicinity. But that's an expression that I, that I want to give you, as well as higher rates for electricity. So it is because I look at the data and I bring that information to you that I say, you know, as a taxpayer, and sometimes as a taxpayer paying a higher rate, I should have a, I should deserve to have a few minutes to let you know what my opinion is with the way the city is run. You know, and if, if it's unfortunate that Mr. Quintero doesn't feel that I have that prerogative, well, I think I still have the Constitution behind me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no other cards for oral communications. Mr. Quintero.
Did I hear a few minutes, Mr. Milano? I think it's been a few hours, many, many hours, actually, to say nothing of the staff time for your different request. Yeah, of course, you have the opportunity to speak and speak freely, as do all of the people that come to the, to the podium. I just, you know, you made a few rather benign statements. It's just that after years and years of listening to you complain about the lack of parks and so forth, I just wanted to point out once again, it was your investment, and whether you bought it near new or, or whatever, it was your investment, your type of investor that basically changed this city from essentially single-family homes with some dispersed apartment buildings into the kind of dense, dense situation that we found ourselves in for the past twenty-five-plus years. So all I said was, I just found it ironic if you keep hammering on that point, the lack of parks, the lack of social services, et cetera, and you're one of the people that invested in the industry that caused the problem to begin with, then I just found it ironic, that's all. But in terms of your constitutionally protected rights to ask for documents and, and say the kind of things that you say, you're absolutely protected, and I'm happy that I live in a country that, that lets people say what they want. I don't have any problems ever with anyone that comes to that podium and gives their opinion. Then, on the other hand, as an elected official, I certainly feel anytime I need to respond, I respond. I don't have any problems with elected officials responding in whatever manner they see fit. They're constitutionally protected also, so whether it's done in a measured tone or it's done in anger, people are human beings and react to different stimuli in different ways. Those are my comments, Mr. Najarian.
Comments? And Mr. Drayman?
Well, I guess I better, better answer, Mr. Mohill, at least a couple of points. One is that what we were debating with regard to GTV six, the reason the issues he raised weren't discussed is because those weren't the issues we were debating. My only question to him was that he kept referring to council members having programs. He kept using that phrase, used it three times, and the whole point was that the report was saying in every option that council members shall not host programs. The debate was not whether even programs were going to be added. These were, the direct, our public information officer, Mr. Wells, made it very clear, these are existing programs that a council member could be, could be included in, plus the PSAs that, that are normally done. So that was that. I thought I knew Mr. Mohill well enough to know that he can take some ribbing now and then, but then again, you know, you don't always know what frame of mind someone brings to the podium. They might not be in a mood to be ribbed or kidded by a council member. But in any case, the last point about my status with AFTRA, Mr. Milano, you may not be aware, or Mr. Mohill, pardon me, M and Ms., you know, Milano and Mohill, you may not be aware, my, I no longer work in, in television, film, et cetera. I stopped doing that back in the nineties when I took a little tumble from an airplane. So though I still have affiliations with Screen Actors Guild and, and with AFTRA, I no longer earn my living through either of those, either of those industries. As a matter of fact, I think Mr. Mincy probably makes more money through AFTRA currently than I do, so you might want to check with him.
Mr. Weaver?
Oh, no. Wouldn't dare.
I just have a few comments, and I don't want to make it seem like I'm piling on Mr. Milano. That's the, the furthest thing that I'd like to do at this point. I do welcome criticism on policy issues, on decisions that the council has made. I really do. The problem I have is when the speakers resort to ad hominem attacks, attacks on the person. To me, that's an indication that the speaker has become frustrated and has run out of logic and has run out of reasoned argument to present to the council. Mr. Milano has twisted facts. He has stated untruths knowingly. He knows that I don't have an Olympic swimming pool, yet he states that I do, several lanes of an Olympic swimming pool. And he may chuckle, and he may say, "Oh, come on," but it's simply not true. I don't think that, and Margaret, I mean, in terms of who's getting beat up up here, I mean, if you want to keep a scorecard, I think there's far more denigration hurled at us sitting here on the dais than we give to the speakers. And that's all I have to say about, about Mr. Milano, is that clearly he's entitled to speak. He shouldn't become frustrated, though, when time and time again, we reject his, his arguments and his positions and his suggestions for his version of what the city of Glendale should be. He's certainly more than welcome to present those to us, but to me, he crosses the line when he makes personal attacks and states outright lies about us as people, as persons, as gentlemen and ladies. And to me, that's where he crosses the line. So if I seem to have a response to everything that he's going to be saying now along those lines, that certainly is the reason. Enough is enough, and the personal attacks should be left out. If we want to have a policy discussion, we're more than, than happy to engage in those kind of detailed discussions. You can't always have it your way, Mr. Milano, such as any single one of us can't have it our way up here. We have to act as a, a council.
Mr. Starbird. Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me first, a clarification, then an announcement on the matter that Mr. Mohill raised about my comments about Mr. Adams' retirement cost falling on Glendale. Melanie Hicken will bear me out that when I spoke to her about the first article, I told her I was really uncertain about who would bear the cost, but that I believed it would fall on Bell. Because I indicated I was uncertain, she checked with a representative of PERS who confirmed that indeed Bell would carry the cost. While both of us were in error, and as it turns out, Glendale will shoulder part of that cost if it's allowed to stand. But I also was the one who alerted her to the fact, when I found out I was in error, that indeed I was, and that's what prompted her second article, which corrected the information. Secondly, by way of an announcement, I'm pleased to indicate that this last week, the Glendale Management Authority membership confirmed and ratified a memorandum of understanding with the city that will implement for all managers in the city the same contract type and levels of cost reduction that you recently approved for the Glendale Firefighters Association. Managers have agreed to pick up a larger share of health costs annually, a larger share of the employers, the city's portion of the employee, of the contributions for pension costs, and have agreed to the implementation of a two-tiered retirement system effective January one that will reduce the formula at age fifty-five, as well as implement a three single highest years, or three highest years average for determining retirement. As you know, it's a single highest year that is getting so much attention currently for its impact, particularly from Bell. I want to express our appreciation to the entire managers with the city. I think it takes a big step in helping us to address the budget issues, both short-term and long-term, and we will have that memorandum to you for ratification in the next couple of weeks. Following that will be the legislation and to implement those cost-saving measures. The total savings in the course of the year, this year, we expect, because we don't have actually a full fiscal year, I think we have eleven months of the year, the contract will be effective, will be a savings of about three-quarters of a million dollars. Goes a long way to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a gentleman who just arrived, and even though I closed oral communications, I will make a special accommodation for a limited period of time to address council. Mr. Smith, will two minutes do it for you?
That'll be fine, thanks. I was just, I just purchased a property at 305 East Stoker, and while remodeling it, I've discovered that my windows, I guess, were not permitted twelve years ago, but the stucco, they were all installed at the same time, and I have permits for that. And I guess you guys are, at some point, from what they've told me over at building, that you're thinking about allowing this kind of grid again, and that new owners would be exempt from having to tear out all the windows and replace them. I was just coming to say that I really appreciate that, and I'm sure a lot of other people would too.
Okay.
So there's like five houses around my house, within two blocks, that have the exact same windows and everything, and they're telling me because they don't go with the neighborhood, I have to replace them.
Your name, sir?
Timothy Smith.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, guys.
This has been a, a topic of lively discussion on the council. Fortunately, we have our planning director available. If you could give a brief status on the, in fact, he can explain it to you in person off, off-camera and explain to you exactly where we are in the process.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
You could get an understanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't have any other cards or hopefully no other comments. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, no, no, no.
Is there new business?
Two new businesses.
Is there new business? There is new business.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Mr. Weaver.
I'd like to move that the council, that the pre-litigation claim of General Growth Properties relating to August seventeenth, two thousand nine, property damage to the Glendale Galleria Bridge be compromised and resolved for the full and complete sum of sixty-five thousand three hundred dollars, and the same is hereby approved and accepted, and the finance director is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum payable to General Growth Properties or its designated agent for delivery by the city, by the city attorney upon the execution of a settlement and release agreement.
Thank you. And again, before anyone reads too much into that, that's a property damage settlement. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Mr. Drayman.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council of the city of Glendale hereby authorizes the city attorney to institute legal proceedings against Yessenian Nunes and those one through twenty in order to recover medical expenses that is paid for the benefit of the, of an employee under the Workers Compensation Insurance and Safety Act. Said proceedings are appropriate under Labor Code Sections 3852 and 3853, which authorize employers to pursue recovery of workers' compensation benefits paid to an employee who is injured on the job. The city attorney is also authorized to include in said legal proceedings a claim against Yessenian Nunes for property damage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Now I move we adjourn.
For second.
Second.
We are adjourned.